All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this joint work session of the Anchorage Assembly and the Anchorage School Board on the Climate Action Plan to Order. Let's go ahead and start with introductions, starting on this side.
Felicia Rivera.
Felicia Rivera, school board.
Pete Peterson.
Shayna Kelkwein, municipality.
Dina Mitchell, school board.
Margot Bellamy, school board.
Andy Holloman, school board.
So I want to thank everyone for making the time to be here today. I did get messages from Mr. Constant and Mr. Davidson. They could not make it today, and then Ms. LaFrance is gonna be late. So, I don't know, the clerk can maybe advise me on this, but I think this might be one of the first times that we're doing a joint work session on a single topic.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Which I think is exciting that we're getting together to talk about a single topic and see how we can collaborate and work together on it. The Climate Action Plan, I think, has been an important priority for many on the Assembly and certainly this administration. So, this work session is intended to figure out how to move forward on parts of the plan that involve the school district and municipality jointly. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Kelkwein.
Thank you for having me. This is a really neat opportunity to bring together the municipality and the school district on climate action, one of the biggest issues that we're dealing with right now. I don't want to pretend to be an expert on what the ASD has done and is doing, so please keep that in mind as I go through this. I kind of took the Climate Action Plan and looked at where there's overlap with the school district, and I will add that we did have the STEM Director on our Outreach and Education Working Group when we were developing the Climate Action Plan, and throughout the development, we spoke to different school district folks, like the Facilities Manager, as well as the Transportation Director. So, we were trying to collaborate and bring them together as we worked on this. So, I did try to reach out to a few of those folks as I was doing this to make sure that I had updated information on what's going on with the school district, but please correct me, stop me, correct me if there's anything that I'm incorrect about. So, as I hope you know, we've got a Climate Action Plan that was passed in May by the Assembly. This is a foundational document that we'll be working from for the next many years, and this really kind of lays out the background to what we're talking about with climate change in Anchorage and what kind of strategies we can take to reduce those carbon impacts, as well as prepare for the changes that we're already seeing. So, this is 108 pages, it's a lot. What we did was create this municipality Climate Action Strategy. This is a condensed version of the Climate Action Plan that's really focused on the actions that we want to do in the near term, the things that we're working on right away. I want to add that the Climate Action Plan was a partnership that we developed with the University of Alaska. They got a grant to do the work and brought in a ton of expertise throughout its development. Just real quick, what we're talking-
Actually, briefly, I just want to note for the record that we've been joined by School Board President Star Marsete, and Matt, I believe we have Assembly Member John Weddleton on the phone?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Really quickly, what we're talking about in terms of climate change in Anchorage is, well, we saw a lot of it this past year. We saw extreme heat, drought in South Central, as well as wildfires, spruce beetle damage that contributes to wildfires, as well as, you know, continuing on into this fall, a much warmer fall, lacking snow, and what we're expecting to see is less snow, more ice going into the future. So, for the Climate Action Plan, we developed these seven very bright sectors: Buildings and Energy, Land Use and Transportation, Consumption and Solid Waste, Health and Emergency Preparedness, Food Systems, Urban Forests and Watersheds, and Outreach and Education. And we had about 100 experts in the municipality, working on developing actions for these different sectors. It was a really exciting group of businesses, university people, municipality employees, experts, nonprofits, you name it, they were all involved in this development. I'll add that we really worked to get out into the community and did about 35 events and engaged over 1,400 people throughout the development of this. So, in terms of implementation, this is really about leadership and accountability. The mayor has already created a resilient sub-cabinet. This is really exciting because I want people to know that the Climate Action Plan implementation does not rest just on this one office, me. It's really permeating throughout the whole municipality. So, the resilient sub-cabinet is made out of people, mostly directors, but people from our different departments who are doing this work within their work plan. We're working on an Anchorage Climate Action Council. This is something that the University of Alaska is leading, and this is an external body that's working to come together to kind of review the work that we're doing. The municipality will put out an annual report on our progress throughout the past year, and we'll do that every year. The Climate Action Council will be reviewing that. They can make recommendations and suggestions on that report. And I bring this up because I thought it actually could make sense that ASD is involved in the Anchorage Climate Action Council. I know you're not external, but this also would include people from the municipality as well, and perhaps ASD, so I wanted to let you know that that is coming.
Thank you, and if I can interrupt really quick, and I think you may know about this already Shayna, but I am working with the Assembly Youth Representatives to add, it might be a subset of the Climate Action Council or some other form, but some type of a youth Climate Action Group. There's a lot of interest to do that, and I think that might be one of those, and that would be through the GAC Youth Advisory Commission, and so that might be one of those avenues where the school district can really tie into the work that we're doing.
I didn't know that, that's, I'm really excited about that. I'd love to be engaged throughout.
Absolutely.
Terrific. Well, to that end, actually, Polaris School submitted 25 resolutions and presented, you'll probably recall, I think it was in May, presented some of those solutions to the Assembly. It was such a cool way to engage and get them involved in this whole process, and one of those was actually to create a youth climate group, so I'm really glad to see that that's coming. But it was everything from procuring local food, to recycling more, to using renewable energy, just a lot of really great ideas that I can share with people if they're interested. As well, Chugiak High School had clearly looked at the Climate Action Plan in detail because they submitted dozens of comments that indicated that they did read through this, so I was really impressed by that as well, I thought that was very exciting, so congrats to your schools and teachers who led those efforts. This is a multiple choice test, a little corny maybe, but there are a lot of different options for the school board and the municipality in terms of climate action, so as you go through this, some of the, some of the actions in this presentation and in the Climate Action Plan are definitely inside the box, some are definitely outside the box, and I hope that you'll consider all of them. So, I'm gonna go through each sector and give you a kind of a taste of what our near-term priorities are, and you'll find these in the Climate Action Strategy, and then I've pulled out some of the priorities that I think would be potentials for the school district to engage on. The school district is called out in some of these, but those are found in the Climate Action Plan, but there are many more where the school district is not called out that I think would be great to work on. And so, for Buildings and Energy, I'm just gonna stop and say that energy efficiency is by far one of the biggest things that we can do to reduce carbon and to save money. So, this means using technology to use energy more wisely, to waste less energy, so instead of asking people to remember to turn off the lights when they leave the room, we'll install motion sensors so that they don't have to remember, and we'll be saving energy and saving money throughout. So, we're working at the municipality on implementing those throughout, and then we're also looking at what kind of policies and programs we can implement to help the greater community do the same. So that includes building energy standards, financing opportunities, looking at incentives, and reducing barriers. I can go into any one of those in more detail if you want, but I'm not gonna do that right now.
Actually, I do have a question for you, Dr. Dyson.
Yeah, the thermal issues, you know, is something I know something about, and high-efficiency light bulbs are a tremendous chance opportunity, and I would suggest that that's, money spent there is far better than motion detectors, at least in the first go-round, for whatever that's worth.
I agree, yes.
I knew you were bright.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hild.
And I'm, forgive me, but I'm a little confused about maybe the purpose of the meeting, like what we have to accomplish, but I'll just say, we kind of do some of this when we rebuild buildings, I mean, energy efficiency is a factor of it. Got a lot of deferred maintenance when we do bonds, is this something the municipality wants to be supporting in how we get our deferred maintenance? When we fix those things, we can address this at the same time. Is that what we're here to talk about, is like, what is it gonna look like going forward?
So, I would say yes and yes. So, as an example, when the school board approves a bond and the bond is to replace a roof, why don't we take the opportunity to think about on that roof, putting solar panels? Are there other opportunities to do similar things when we are already gonna spend money on the bonds? And so, that's the kind of conversation that I want to have today, is what are we doing and what more can we be doing? Yes, President Marsete?
Yes, and actually, Mr. Holloman has made a recommendation that we look into solar panels, but would this, could I ask Tom Roth to speak to that very quickly?
Sure.
So, thank you, Matt President. So, as the school board president mentioned, it has been brought forward by Member Holloman, a potential board policy that would require an evaluation for any project that could include a roof replacement or renewal to a building, that solar panels would be evaluated in a cost-benefit manner. So, that answers your question.
Yes, Ms. Hild.
And just to bring some appearances, I mean, we are already doing the lighting issue Mr. Dyson pointed out, and when we put a roof on, we are getting energy efficiency gains, pretty dramatic ones, you know, windows and insulation, those are always really strong considerations. I think we have the people wanting to, because it takes us money, right, like, aside from any other factors, we can get more toward children, so just to give credit to that, I just, I don't know, I don't, I guess I'm a little confused on our-
If I might, I want to acknowledge that, I don't mean to indicate that that's not happening.
No, I just, I think it's great, I just don't, I'm not saying in a bad way, I'm just a little confused on the, like, what we want to come out of this. Are we just here to be educated on the Climate Action Plan, or?
I don't know if you have any perspective, but my perspective is, yes, to be educated, see if there are pieces of the Climate Action Plan that are pointed out specifically for the school district, and see if we are moving on those. So, part of this is sort of taking inventory of what's being done, and I think that's important for us to understand.
You've reached the Alaska State Crime Lab. Please let's take a closer look at the climate change. Press one to dial up a dis-
Yes, Ms. Mitchell.
So, I want to say that I really appreciate this opportunity because I have not had the chance to be at any of the Climate Action sessions, and as the largest, I think, property owner in the state, we clearly have a big impact on this and our operations as well. So, I really appreciate understanding what the municipality is trying to achieve and seeing how we can up our game to support this, because obviously, we, you know, we feel strongly that our kids are our future and we need to invest in them, but if we don't have an environmental future, then, you know, it, all of what we're doing doesn't really matter, right? So, I take climate change very, very seriously, and I really appreciate the opportunity to see what you guys have come up with and how we can help support that.
And that was ex-
Yes, President Marsete.
So, would it help if, I mean, I don't know if you're wanting answers to these, what we're doing today, or would it help if we had, like, Tom Roth send you something of what we're already doing and the way of efficiencies with the school district, so that you're educated on what we're doing, and then we can look and see where the gaps are?
I did speak with Darren-
Oh, okay.
About, and what I mean to say here is that the school district is doing a lot.
Yeah.
A lot. They've, you've replaced, I would say, from what I can tell, thousands, maybe 10,000 lights?
Yeah.
So, again, I want to read, my understanding for being invited here was to share a little bit more about the Climate Action Plan and how the school district can engage.
Okay.
So, I have been really excited to learn about all the things the school district has been doing.
I didn't know if you had that information or nothing.
There's a lot of it, I have some of it.
Thank you, Ms. Bellamy.
Thank you, I'm excited to be here, and if we could just get on with the presentation, I really want to learn as much as I can, because I've not had the opportunity to do this before.
Okay.
So, if we could, I mean, I just want us to move forward, please.
Thank you, we'll do that.
I do want to back up and say that, whoops, we're looking at $15 million, 15.5 million dollars a year in energy costs, you all know that, that's a huge number. So, in terms of efficiency, we're battling that, and we're looking at, what does it mean if we could save 10% with energy efficiency? And right now, the school district is doing everything they can with the funding that they get for energy efficiency, because they know this, they see this number, they understand it, and so, but they also are battling these increasing energy rates, and that's a huge issue. So, we're putting in, you know, more efficient roofs and better windows and better lighting, but we're battling increasing rates, and I think that gets frustrating because you're seeing that the total 15 million maybe doesn't budge as much, but really, what we should be considering is what would we be spending if we didn't do those things? Because we are saving a lot of money, but it's a little bit more of a complex calculation than just what is our cost from 2018, from 2015. So, the school district has done a lot and should be acknowledged for that.
Thank you, also one other thing on the record that we've been joined by Ms. LaFrance. Thank you.
So, here are just some of the things that ASD is doing, and I want to point out that ASD is doing an intense job in terms of energy monitoring. They've got 42,000 points of data monitoring, which means they've got smart buildings, which they can control much better than, you know, your average building. So, they find, they'll find out where there's an issue and what needs to be done, pretty much right away. That's huge in terms of building energy usage and management. Again, replacing lighting, upgrading boilers, converting to variable frequency drives so that motors aren't just running non-stop, and upgrading refrigeration are just a few of these things. I did kind of consider what other things are in the Climate Action Plan that could be done, and I've talked to Darren about a few of these, and certainly upgrading energy efficiency as this allows, and then if there are a way, I want to think about financing, is there a way to reinvest those savings into more upgrades? How can we do more with the money that we do have? I believe with new facilities, there is already an energy-efficient design in the concept, and I don't know how far that goes, so that could be something to consider when we build a new building that is gonna be up for 40, 50, 60 years, so it makes a lot of sense to do those things upfront. Looking at power-saving modes on electronics, those actually can be a big draw when you've got as many buildings as ASD does. This was Darren's, Darren, something that I talked about, creating dashboards with real-time feedback, so you could walk into a building and see how this building compares to others, or what it's using at this exact moment. You have the data, it would, I don't know what it would take to make this happen, but then you could do like a competition between schools and get the students involved and really work on education with them, so I think that's a fun one. Ensuring energy use information gets to the right people, this is an issue with the municipality and I think with businesses, a lot of people, the energy bills go right to your finance people, the finance people pay it, they might put the number into a spreadsheet or something, and it doesn't go to facilities management people. I think this happens, I'm understanding somewhat in ASD, but I, it sounds like there could be room for improvement here, because if a facility manager doesn't know what the building is using compared to last month or last year, they don't know if there is their improvements to be made. Just like a car, a building does get out of tune, and so it needs to be constantly looked at and even maybe recommissioned, to make sure it's running at the highest efficiency. I took some steps at the municipality, and what we could, the municipality, or the Assembly could do is, you know, continue to support bonds for efficiency. This is money that goes right back into the programs and the students, and then there is some more clever financing opportunities out there that I think we could look at, that probably ASD has looked at, but that includes traditional loans, energy service companies that can provide the upfront capital, and basically, the idea with like an energy savings performance contract is that the company, like a Siemens, would come in and make the changes and pay for them, and then the customer would pay for the loan based on the savings, and so you kind of structure it so that you have your savings, and then there's a revenue stream to pay back that loan. So, there is some financing options out there, and at the municipality, we're working on more, but I think it's, you know, worth that conversation.
I do have a question on this slide, Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you. So Shayna, you can talk about the vampire loads, which is a funny, interesting phrase, and it makes sense, the school district would be concerned about that because they're a massive fiscal plan. The municipality also has a number of fairly large buildings that aren't used very frequently, so I'm thinking about the Northern Guard Center right across from us, the Sullivan Arena, which is usually empty throughout the day. Do we, have we done the same kind of inventory on our own large facilities, looking for those kind of vampire loads?
I'm working on it for the frequently used ones, but I hadn't thought about it for the infrequently used, so I'll add it to the list.
I'm trying to think, there's maybe our hockey arenas-
Yes.
-a few. Do we have a few big pieces of that?
Thank you, Mr. Holloman.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak a little bit to some of the, I guess you call them headwinds or ills faced by the school district. As someone who used to manage the computers in one site at Goldenview Middle School, you can't help but be aware of the fact that we've got hundreds of machines on all night long when the building's empty, and there are ways to put them into a sleep mode, although that's also when we do updates, other things actually happen automatically, and so making it work without having a negative impact on performance actually becomes somewhat complex. And if you've reached that point on a Thursday afternoon to where you've done everything that you can do that week, and you can sit back and contemplate the future, which I don't recall ever actually happening, you can, you can kind of set that up to the project and say, I'm gonna devote time to structuring this and figuring out how to manage it and make it happen, but you just run out of time and people. It possibly could be more efficient now, and if things are much more centrally managed in IT, and it may be worth the time and it may have the impact, it will cause bad things to happen, just because you can't do anything without causing bad things to happen. Hopefully, you make a whole lot of good things happen, and then you try to correct it, but unfortunately, a lot of these things do come with a labor cost of somebody, and on a day-to-day basis, the Anchorage School District is out of labor, unfortunately.
Ms. Hild.
I agree with Mr. Holloman, but I do know in other districts where teachers do shut off the computers and they have a schedule for when updates happen, and I don't know, and I know some already do it in our district, so I don't, those are all true things, and also, there's room for us to do that, I don't know what it would look like, but it's happening in other districts, and probably ours too, to some extent.
On an individual basis, people can do a certain amount, but you say you're looking at a building that has 40 or 50 staff, but 500 or 600 machines, and they can say, do that with their personal machine, and it's also the case that now we have the ability to wake them up if we need to, which we used to not be able to, but it ultimately, ultimately, it takes more effort. In the case you're describing, a little bit of effort by a whole lot of people, or a more substantial amount of effort by one or two people, you just run out of time to get certain things done, unfortunately.
Just a real quick anecdote, to make you feel better, all of us feel better about the kind of efforts that we're making, in the National Guard, when you come in to use your computer once a month, basically, not only do you have to, not only do you keep it on, but you were required to keep it on the entire month you're gone. If you don't, they'll lock you out of it because there are security updates, so.
Because you're being a problem.
You have to keep it on and in the network the entire time while you're gone. I mean, it's in like a sleep kind of mode, it's still on.
Some of that same fight depth as well, if it's on, it's connected.
So, we're, I've got a great fellow this year who's working on this, and is working, gonna be talking to IT at the MOA about this, and so it's something that we can share with ASD at least, or have a conversation on it. I mean, in the large scheme of things, this is actually a pretty small piece, but something worth thinking.
Mr. Dyson.
Yeah, lots of jurisdictions have had demand meters, meters that tell you which, you know, you're using, and the rate, so that really lets people know when the high loads are, so, but you have a very limited opportunity, you know, to do that, except on weekends, the holidays, and all of those things, where that really helps is if you do have solar, you know, and you happen to be generating more than your demand, you can sell it, the so-called demand metering, and there's, I think something going on with our utilities, you know, we'll think about that, it's just, yeah, it can be useful, but you're nodding, you know that probably not large savings out there for you.
Darren. Thank you, let's continue.
I wanted to talk about renewable energy really quick. There are some really great programs out there, including the KidWin Challenge, which is where kids construct renewable energy systems through the lens of solar or wind, and there's competitions, and they learn about the physics of it, and it's pretty great, there's some coming up. REEP runs both of these programs, Renewable Energy Alaska Project. This is the Beggitch Middle School Wind Turbine through, that was put up through Alaska Wind for Schools, I think there's eight in the state, all around the state, but this is one of them, and to be honest, this does not produce much energy, but it's more about the educational component of it, so it's still a pretty neat program. So, I knew that there was probably gonna be a conversation about solar, and so wanted to at least address it. I will say that renewable energy is the future, and students are really interested in it, kids are interested in renewable energy, it's like the cool hip thing, and in fact, like, there are many opportunities for renewable energy jobs in the future, and so just thinking about those career pathways is, I think, a great thing for ASD to do. Solar prices have fallen, we do have, we're increasing our solar energy jobs, and that's because in 2019, we've nearly doubled our solar energy output compared to all previous years combined, not just 2018, but all previous years. So, solar really is growing in Alaska, and I know that there's, I don't know if this group wants to discuss the resolution on solar for new roofs, so I kind of put this out here and didn't know if you wanted to stop and discuss this. I guess my take would be there is a lot of real estate on roofs that is generally open and not shaded, and so just doing an economic assessment is generally not a bad thing. The solar curve is such that in, what, May through August, you're gonna get most of your production, but that's when you're not really using those buildings, but just doing the assessment and say, well, if it pays back in 14 years and we've got a 25 to 30-year life on the system, I don't see a problem with that, and maybe there's some other considerations, but it is a lot of real estate, and it is really cool for schools to be able to say, we are producing our own energy, and the students can learn about that.
Thank you, you have a few questions on that, Ms. Mitchell?
Well, I was just going to say, this was something that came up, I think, in our last work session, or, and our superintendent talked about some of the limitations, and Tom, can you, is it all right if Tom?
So, if I might, and I recognize, acknowledge that we've got multiple buildings, but there are a couple of issues, and, you know, we talked a little bit about the cost-benefit piece, it's more than just the installation cost of panels, it's operational cost, too, that's one thing that's consideration for this, but- But, but we don't understand, there's a lot of study that we need to, to consider. So, you know, the, I, I guess in short, the, the, the energy producing industry gets a vote on this. So there, there are six main utilities that are managed by the Regulatory Commission of Alaska. And by the Regulatory Commission, there, there is an allowance for about 1.5% of power that can be generated by, by other than those six utilities. So if you think about, you know, the, the installation of solar panels on a number of buildings, whatever that size of those panels are, you're getting into a level of production where you are a energy-producing entity, which competes with the six existing utilities. So that's one concern, but, but also just in utilities itself, I was looking at the JuGage Electric as an example. They, they classify non-utility production sources under, under four different categories, A through D. And where they get concerned is C and D, where you're producing an amount of power that, that is potentially generating more than is, than is being consumed. And you get into this thing that's called islanding, where you're, you're actually affecting the, the power grid itself. So again, I just, I, I say this not, not to, not to be doubtful, but it's a lot more complex than just putting panels on a roof. I guess this is the point I'd like to make, so I think it does require a lot of detailed study before you really commit to a meaningful installation of, of a number of solar panel systems on buildings. So I'll, I'll pause.
So just to follow up, it sounds like maybe there's some work that the union needs to do with the utilities to bypass those issues or the barriers that might be?
It's a bit of a staple.
Yeah, it's probably an RCA issue rather than an assembly or.
Okay.
But Shannon, I know.
The way it is right now, you could easily just keep it under 25 kilowatts, which is still a substantial amount of energy and be within that net metering role that the RCA has. And I, I could counter that, the great thing about solar is that it doesn't require a lot of operational costs after that. There's no moving parts and you probably, you do have to change out the inverter after maybe ten or fifteen years, but that's one of the really great things about solar. You don't have to shovel off snow, you just put them up and they're.
Yeah, but, but I guess I, I put it in, in one, in a perspective of scale, but two, you know, when you, when you put a panel on a roof, you know, here in Alaska, you know, from, from the roof perspective, you know, you're, you're adding another instrument on top of a, of a system where you, you potentially, I mean, it's windy here, so you, you could, you could potentially see where, where panels could be, could be challenged during some of the environmental conditions. You're adding weight to roofs. I mean, it is, again, it's a, it's a system that, that is engineered. So you're, you're introducing things that are, that are not really a part of the, the original design of the roof. So again, I mean, I, I, I think there is an operational piece here that's more than just sticking a panel on a roof and forgetting about it for twenty years. And you gotta, you gotta, you gotta keep them clean, you gotta, you gotta count for, where does that power go when you're not using it? If it's not on the grid, you gotta put in batteries.
Thank you. So I just wanna be able to manage time here, so I have a few, a, a list here. I have Ms. LaFrance, Ms. Hildy, Mr. Dunbar, and President Marset. How much more do we have? Cause I know this could be.
I wonder if this is a different conversation that we have separately?
Well, I guess that goes to my question, then how much more do we have? Do we have quite a bit more to go through?
Decent amount and I can go through it pretty quickly.
Mr. Chair, I just, you know.
Sure. Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to make sure that the school district has the opportunity to go visit the Egan Center and see what we've done on the rooftop there and see how simple the operations are and to make sure that the invitation is also extended to the school board as well.
I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to President Marset.
So in our last school board meeting, this is something we want to look at, but right now we have strategic planning. We've got so much going on at the district this year that we have said that this is something we're interested in looking at. And we have said after the first year or maybe into next year, we will do an in-depth study on this and see how we could possibly implement solar roofs. But right now with our financial constraints and our resource strengths as far as personnel, we've got earthquake repairs, we've got fifteen buildings that require earthquake repairs. We just felt that, yes, this is very important, but it was something we were gonna have to look at a little bit further down the road for resources.
So I'm gonna go ahead and go through the queue and then probably will have to move on after I go through the queue. So Ms. LaFrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies for being late and maybe you already talked about this, but just real quick, what is the resolution or who's putting it forward? Did, I don't know if we did say it exactly, but, and I wonder if, Mr. Holloman, you wanna explain it?
Um, the one for the school district is that when we're doing major repairs or roof work, that there'll be a side-by-side bond on the cost and benefit of adding solar. And, and we are gonna wait to take it up because, as Mr. Roth mentioned, it's not a simple piece of math. And, and our folks are pretty busy right at the moment. Busy all the time, but they're especially busy right now. We've got the budget coming up. But when we get ready to vote, what we'll be looking at is what, what is the long-term payback considering these other factors? The, the fact that it may complicate roof maintenance, it may, it may cause us to have to do more work on a roof or maybe less, but, but it is gonna be something that takes a, a bit of investigation and looking at, we'll be expecting real numbers from them. And I think once that happens, the math will be pretty simple on the bond as to whether or not it's something we can go to the public and say, this makes an awful lot of sense. So that's, that's the immediate proposal we have to change our policy in ASD, that every time we do major work like that, we will also look at the cost benefit of adding solar.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Ms. Hildy?
Oh, thank you. And I just wanna keep it out there that this is a great use, we talked about the summer having like extra capacity, but that's just given like our current structure. I'm open to our school district looking at how do we, how do we educate children? What does the schedule look like when our building's still, we have like really big drops in education, you know, mass chores go down in the summer, you know, that learning decline in the summer, summer drop off or whatever. So looking at, okay, is this a better use of our building in the summer when we have this higher, I'll call it free energy? And it's the students and their learning, that's a win for us. Now, we still have the regulatory piece and all those, but just to keep the, the educational goal, we can improve how we deliver education. So that's always an option in how we're talking, hopefully bringing back what that could look like.
Thank you. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you. And I, I just wanna echo what Ms. Marset said, that's a, that's a really big goal and a long-term goal to restructure the way we deliver education in terms of time, time. If we're based around our agrarian calendar, it doesn't really make sense for us. I've lived in other countries where they do educate during the summer and it's just, the science is just overwhelming, the health of education, retention, everything else. So that's a great point. But I wanted to ask a question and I think Mr. Holl, uh, Holloman answered it with his clarified question. So Mr. Roth said our current roofs aren't built necessarily to accommodate solar panels. Right now, when we do these major rebuilds, even if we're not installing solar panels, are they being built in such a way where they could in, in the future accommodate them reasonably? Is that something that's kept in mind when we're doing these major rebuilds?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Roth here.
So, so if I might very briefly, that what, what the, the district is doing, you know, we, we are replacing roofs with what we call an EPDM system, which is basically a membrane, an epoxy membrane that's placed across the, the entire roof. And the idea is, is to minimize the number of penetrations in that membrane because that's how you get the protection from water. So if, if we are looking to attach additional panels, say, to an existing EPDM roof, what you're, what you're, what you're doing is you're penetrating that, that membrane. So you're creating more points where you could have water impersions into the roof system, kind of accelerates its failure.
So, so what you just, what's, what you say is that actually the newly repaired roofs are less amenable to solar panels in the ones we're placing?
To, to bolt the solar panel, that's correct.
Great. Mr. Mayor?
I just wanna point out again, I'm gonna reiterate the invitation to go look at the top of the Egan where they're not bolted down. And it is done just by placing the panels on top of the existing membranes. And, I mean, to me, it's a little discouraging to hear the reluctance on the, on the part of the school district to proceed aggressively with looking at solar. Because I've been waiting three years, we've been talking about it for a long time, and it would seem to me that if we'd been three years into this program, the amount of money that the school district could have saved would have been substantial. And I, I, instead of looking for reasons to say no, you gotta be looking for reasons to say yes to this.
Mr. Holloman?
I was gonna follow up. Part of the reason of doing this, when we're doing this major work, I, I don't think anyone's gonna feel comfortable adding significant weight to the roof of a school without engineering, looking at it and, and people, people being certain it's safe and it's okay. So a lot of that, I think, gets done when we're doing major roof repair anyway. There's the opportunity to configure the roof in a different way. I, I don't know, not being an engineer or whatnot, but that's, that was my thinking in saying that, that as we're doing this, we'll also take a hard look at this. And it may be that the, the way we go back with roofs would change, provided we know we're looking at this as a, as a cost, as a potential addition at the same time.
Thank you. And I think, just to close off this subject and provide one final comment, I wanna reiterate what the mayor has stated and would like to know by the next joint assembly and school board meeting, if such an invitation has been accepted between staff of the, the school district and staff of the municipality to see, at least explore what's going on at the Egan. So by that meeting, I'd like to know if an invitation has been accepted and if that can happen. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move on.
This is the longest sector because it is, has the most opportunity here. So I can move on quite quickly to the other sectors. Land use and transportation is a big deal municipal-wide. It's fifty percent of our energy consumption and twenty-five percent statewide of greenhouse gases. So this is a big deal. We're looking at the municipality at ways to reduce that and create more opportunities for taking public transit, for biking, for walking, and that includes how we, how we infill and develop our, our city. And so, for example, moving more residential downtown can allow for more walking opportunities. I will say that for the school district, you're thinking about buses, right? And so there is some really great news on buses for the school district through the Volkswagen Settlement Fund, which is a total of eight point one two five million dollars. This was a fund that was given to Alaska as grants because Volkswagen cheated on their emissions testing and was sued. And so what that meant is that there's three point four million dollars for school buses alone for upgrading them. And so it could be for more efficient motors or it could be for, you know, new school buses with diesel exhaust fluid systems, which I know nothing about, but they're better for the environment. And so in March, we got awarded six new buses out of eight, I think, or no, out of eleven in the state. And in September, that, the other RFA went out and that actually closes today. So I'm hoping that the school bus, or the school district gets even more new buses through that grant money. Electric buses were allowed and in fact, TOKE Alaska is getting an electric bus, which is amazing. We will be watching that. And we, you may recall that the People Mover and Solid Waste Services did a pilot study in early 2018 and we found that for public transit, the electric buses aren't really there. Of course, ASD buses move much less, they're not operating for eighteen hours a day. I think it's like eight hours a day, ten maybe? So it could be a possibility. I still think it's something that, you know, we're looking at the technology and the cost. They cost a lot more and they require, they require chargers, so you can charge them. So it's more infrastructure, but it is really a cool opportunity. There's much less moving parts, they're much more efficient, and they don't exhaust fumes at the source, which is where children are. So their little bodies definitely have a greater impact on, or I guess emissions have a greater impact on their little human bodies. So I'm, I'm excited about where this is going and I've been watching other northern cities such as Minnesota, Edmonton in Alberta, Copenhagen and Oslo are completely changing over. And so I'm watching how those are operating.
Okay. So I have a list here. I have Ms. Hildy, Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Dyson, Ms. Salatell. Ms. Hildy?
I have a great eye for this light hand raise. I, I think the Volkswagen, I just wanna point out, I, I think our Director of Transportation, she, she is very proactive in this and I just wanna make sure she gets this excellent credit. She saw that she's, oh, we gotta jump on this. And then not only did she say, let's do it one time, let's do it again. So our, you know, I understand being impatient and I, there's a lot of things I'm impatient about, but we have people working really hard to find money for our students and do it in a way that's gonna build long-term capacity for what we're doing. So how we talking, if we can find better ways, of course, let's do that, but honor the work that's been done.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
My question was answered.
Thank you. Mr. Dyson?
Yeah, I have on the land use issue. Energy reduction is fine. We happen to have an almost unlimited supply of the cleanest fuel we know of right now. It's practical and that's natural gas. And our gas is fairly sweet. That's a technical term. But, so I just encourage it to look at, well, natural gas vehicles. Several states and jurisdictions have done very well. Escape me why we don't. And remember, anything that hauls people, you gotta have a heater. And most buses and such have, have an auxiliary heater that's fueled by hydrocarbons because electric heat is a very inefficient way to use that. But if our issue is protecting the environment, one of the very best things we could do is plant, plant trees. Now, our study that we passed had a pretty good section in there about that and I really liked that. We need to do better at incentives and not clear cut if you're gonna build, you know, and to re-put trees or grass or wherever where they're vacant lots. And almost the worst thing we can do for the thermal environment is to dig up black asphalt parking lots, you know, and so on and so forth. So I, I encourage you, when you think about land use, to do all we can to keep as much vegetation as we can and/or put it back. And by the way, the comments here about solar panels and all that, it really is complicated. And I just encourage all not to jump on a bandwagon because it is the popular thing we be doing. And look into the details and all of the downstream stuff on that because it's a huge issue. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dyson. And just a comment on that very briefly, the North Star Community Council actually brought up that section of the Climate Action Plan. They're very interested in what you're interested in and I actually mentioned your name, that you keep bringing this up to us.
I'm the egg.
Yes. Ms. Salatell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd say that the University Area Community Council is very excited about the future of electric buses because they live very near to the bus, central bus point and they are very, very, very concerned with emissions. So it's a repeat conversation we have.
Thank you. President Marset?
Mr. Roth, have we not investigated electric buses? Have we looked into that already? My entertainment, we have.
So, so Mad President, we, we did when, when People Mover did bring in a, a bus as a pilot system, we, we were very much in, involved, not so much in the planning or execution of it, but just seeing how that, how that went. We, we did have a couple of opportunities to have conversations with, with the Assembly. And, and I think the point was, you know, because, because of the cost of, of just the infrastructure, that, that the district would, if, if, if the district acts in this, it would only really move forward with the city in terms of going, going electric. But two, the, the, the concern, and somebody mentioned it, it's, it's really about distance and use time, you know, between charges and, and, and I think the time that you, you look at the buses, you know, because of, of the nature of their routes and their multiple routes, it's, it's time and it's distance that, that buses operate, school buses operate that, that, you know, we didn't see the technology was quite where it needed to, to support a, a school bus mission.
Thank you.
I will add that People Mover and the school district have been working together and have been expanding the youth ride free. So I think it's up to like forty schools now, which I was surprised, I, I think that's terrific and it would be great if we kept doing that. Okay, consumption and solid waste. I work at Solid Waste Services, so this is a really exciting career. And we are all about how we extend the life of our landfill. That's what that dooms- That's what that Doomsday Clock is down there. Um, and I'm not gonna pull it up. I think you've all probably seen it. Um, but we're doing things like expanding recycling and composting and other ways to, um, uh, keep things out of the landfill. Um, and so, we're also working on our methane gas collection and use. But in regards to how the consumption and solid waste piece can kind of fit with ASD, there's some really exciting stuff that we're doing. And I pointed out 9A down here, generate and enact policy to increase diversion, including policies that look upstream like extended producer responsibility, which is a term for, um, holding manufacturers accountable to help us recycle, things like that. Um, but there has been some really great work. ASD is partnering with Solid Waste Services and Alaska Waste to fund a recycling position. Um, we have a new person whose name is escaping me, but, um, she's terrific, and, uh, this, this group works on things like expanding, uh, organics collection and education as well as recycling. Um, I don't know if you know, but there are recycling trailers at these four schools. So, parents, when they're dropping off their kids, can drop off their recycling as well. Um, I hope that people saw the, the, um, piece on the news about introducing reusable trays. Uh, I kinda giggled because it's really reintroducing reusable trays, right? Like, didn't we all do that when we were growing up?
Yeah.
Um, and so, we're trying to, um, find ways to do that. Um, and I wanted to show this picture, which I think is really great, that the Assembly did approve November 15th Anchorage Recycles Day, and some of the students came and presented, and it was really adorable.
Oh, yeah. We just...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, I actually, uh, got an email from an energy efficiency, uh, person, and, and they said that the, the easiest way to increase energy efficiency is reduce food waste. And I, you know, I was, on a cur- on a curfew's guide to me, I was not expecting that. And so, is, is that something that you're aware of, and, and what's the plan to, to try and move forward with that?
Yeah, um, food waste accounts for about 25% of what goes to the landfill, which is utterly terrifying. Um, we, we here take, go through about 1,200 tons of, um, trash every day, and about 80% of that goes to essential transportation and midtown. Um, so that means a lot of trucks going back out to the, the landfill. And it, 25% being food is just pretty appalling. Um, that means that we're not using our, our food resources very well, and a lot of energy went into, um, creating that. We are expanding, Solid Waste Services now has curbside composting, we have community composting, so you can come and take your scraps in, and you can even pick up finished compost, which is really exciting. Um, we're expanding that, and in fact, Alaska Waste this summer has piloted two communities and, because they are having demand for composting. Um, so, we are doing that. I think, uh, on a personal level, you know, we all need to be a little bit better about wasting food. Um, there's not really a good reason for that, so, yeah.
You gotta eat leftovers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Whoops. Okay. Health and emergency preparedness. Um, wildfires, earthquakes, and, uh, I am forgetting the third greatest, uh, emergency in Anchorage. It should be obvious. Uh, freezing winter, uh, freezing rain are kind of our three biggest emergencies that we prepare for. And, um, so, a big part, again, of the plan is preparing for, uh, changing climate. And so, uh, this could definitely start at the level of the school district. When schools started this year, it was scary. There was so, we had such a hot summer, we had wildfires everywhere. School district had to cancel outdoor activities after school. Um, so, even expanding the visibility of the air quality index, um, could be a, a great partnership with our health department and a good way to make sure that parents and students are educated on when it's healthy for them to be outside, uh, and, and what good and bad air quality days look like. Because sometimes you don't see it. Sometimes this summer, it looked clear, and I would go outside for a bike ride, and, uh, I could feel it right away. So, you know, just looking at the air quality index is a great indicator of when it's safe to be outside. On food systems, um, Alaskans, or at least Anchorage, uh, we import about 95% of our food. So, in terms of resiliency, that's not very good. Um, the school district does do things like, um, work on gardens and, um, I think supports community gardens. I remember there were a couple of, uh, those Polaris resolutions that included expansion and support for community gardens. Um, municipality has about 200 plots, and what a great way to, uh, encourage resiliency in our communities. In fact, one of the positives I'm seeing in climate change is that we're expanding our growing season. So, um, I actually grew tomatoes this summer, and, uh, they, you know, it's, it's becoming an easier place to grow food. So, this is a great way to kind of encourage, um, not only, uh, resiliency, but also an education and kind of empowering ourselves and our students, um, in, you know, how they live a resilient life.
And if I may on that point, um, since you brought up the Polaris resolutions, I think that was fantastic that Polaris did those. And, um, you know, what I did with those is I sent them on to our youth, uh, Assembly Representatives and sort of asked them, are you interested in moving forward on any of these? And I understand that they are. Um, and so, uh, if there's, I think that's a natural conduit, particularly for any of the schools that are talking about these and, and interested in these and, uh, wanna work on the issues that I really think are, particularly our Assembly Representatives, I mean, this is their number one issue.
Terrific. I did point out here 19C, which is look at our purchasing and procurement policies to see if there could be a locally grown procurement policy in the school district. I, um, you know, could look at the same thing, see what those costs would be.
Ms. Hildy?
I just wonder, and I don't know about garden, great deal. We have that issue of all the parking lot and those, there's a lot of empty parking space, right? Just turf. Can you put temporary garden plots? Does it destroy those, um, you know, the asphalt or whatever concrete that it's on? If you had a garden there for three months in the summer? Just trying to figure out a different way to keep that empty space if you're able. I, I just don't know.
Uh, I think there are some who are very passionate about that. Ms. Salatell?
Yes, I am. Uh, so, I'm a, I'm a former mistress, so I do lasagna gardening, which we just put down cardboard and we build soil on top, and it is completely removable. Uh, we did that at Spinnard, just pile up the Spinnard Community Garden in Little Church alone, could be my housing, uh, lot. Um, yeah, there's, there's tons of ways, and I am gonna give a shout out to my favorite school garden, which is Little Law, which I spent a lot of time working with those guys from the elementary school there, um, to, and Neighbor Works, I've been engaged with them. Um, it's really fantastic. Um, so, I'm all for as many gardens everywhere, um, but schools is a great opportunity, and maybe this is a, we need to balance our, our parking requirements at school with, uh, growing to, Mr. Dumbarton.
Yeah, I have what to say.
Balancing school parking requirements with, uh, yeah.
Uh, Ms. Hildy?
I was just originally thinking that, that when I was at Target, like, there's just a huge parking lot, so we have great garden plots that are school on actual grass. I, I don't wanna mess our, like, our, you know, just having those conversations of what it's gonna look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dyson?
No, I, just saying, yeah.
Oh, great.
There you go. Yay. Amen.
Thank you.
Oh, good?
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, I like that. That's also the box. Uh, we are moving through quickly. This is good. Um, urban forest, this is about a healthy ecosystem, and, uh, like Mr. Dyson said, planting trees is one of the best things that we can do. Our watersheds and our trees and our canopy is a huge carbon sink, and that's a really important piece of this. Um, and so, uh, 22F is promoting and expanding weed pulse, tree plantings, spruce beetle identification and management, wildfire mitigation. Uh, so, a lot of this is about education activities and promoting, uh, stewardship. So, um, that's certainly something we could work with the school district on. I can see some possibilities there. Uh, this is a big one, of course, outreach and education. Curriculum in, that brings in climate resources and energy information, I think, is definitely huge. Uh, we had a lot of great people, again, somebody, uh, through the STEM Director at ASD was on this works, work group. Um, and so, encouraging education about climate change, energy, and the development of career and technical education, uh, and clean energy jobs, I think, is such a big one. Um, and so, that's something that K, that, uh, ASD is doing a lot of. Here are some of the programs that ASD is already working with. Um, the AK Energy Smart Program, I think, is terrific because it's Alaska-specific. It does meet the curriculum requirements that you need. My understanding is that the sixth grade science class, the second semester, does have access to these, um, kits that go through AK Energy Smart, and it's really cool. You can, um, go online and download presentations, worksheets, all of this stuff. So, teachers have access to this because I know how busy they are. Uh, they don't have time to develop that curriculum. So, it's there for them. And it's even, it is very Alaska-specific. It's got really cool things like, um, it talks about snow machining and sled dogs and the kind of energy they use. Alaska Resource Education traditionally has been more on, um, Alaska resources such as extraction, and they're now, uh, working to expand that to renewable energy and offer that within the curriculum that's, that's provided. And then the Power Pledge Challenge is a challenge that schools can opt into, um, that, uh, basically is a competition. So, they learn about energy use, they do some, uh, some experiments in the classroom, and then they can go home and work with their families on identifying a couple of things they can do to reduce energy. Um, so, I think, you know, this is such a big deal. The students that are going, that are in your classes right now, they will not know a climate normal. The climate right now is unstable, and that's what they're gonna live with, and they're, they're gonna be dealing with the outfall of what is happening now. I will, I did wanna throw out one of these, Kaufman Cove. Um, this is a bit of an outside-of-the-box, um, example, but this was maybe the most inspirational tours that I got to go on. Um, in Kaufman Cove, they, it's a very small school on Prince of Wales Island, and they have a biomass heated school and greenhouse where the community members can bring in cords of wood and earn money. Um, they're growing all sorts of plants. The, the sixth graders were schooling me on nitrates versus nitrites, like, I didn't know what they were even talking about. They have to weigh things, the kindergartners are getting eggs, they have bees, they have orchards. It's just a really cool ecosystem, and that's Kaufman Cove where they have like 40 students. Um, so, it's really, you know, then they sell, they, they work on a whole, um, business plan and model to sell that produce in the communities. Um, so, I mean, this is just a really cool thing that kind of has expanded economic development and really gotten the whole island excited. Um, so, I wanted to put that out there as an example.
So, on, on that subject, um, and I'm just saying this as an educational base, not just the school district do this, but, um, I was just listening to a podcast earlier this week, and I think there's some country in Europe that is mandating that every school have one hour a week of education around climate change. And I think that is fantastic. That is the future. Um, so, just wanted to put that as an educational base. Yes, Mr. Peterson?
Just to go back a, a second, uh, you were talking about planting trees, and, uh, the number one country in the world that's, uh, leading in reforestation is the country of Costa Rica. And so, if you, that would be something you might wanna check out to see what they're doing because they've had amazing amount of success doing that where most other countries, especially Brazil, are going the other direction where they're burning down, cutting down trees, uh, to increase their agricultural output, uh, where the Costa Ricans have got their act of it.
Great.
Thank you. Mr. Dunbar?
So, speaking as an urban forest, I, I was wondering, uh, so I didn't see that slide, and I was, but I was also wondering about green roofs in Anchorage. I've heard that they don't work as well because of weight concerns, um, but is that something that we could do on either our facilities or the ASD facilities or places where green roofs make sense?
We did do some research on this when we were going through the Climate Action Plan because people wanted it, and, uh, there are more challenges up here than in the lower 48, and weight is a huge one with snow and everything. So, uh, we didn't include it. Uh, I think we included some reference to, like, keeping an eye on it. I can't remember exactly. Um, and I think that there are some instances where it could work, but as, in terms of a policy, I couldn't figure out how to include it.
Well, we did do something actually recently, um, in response to a, I guess it was a year and a half ago, in response to a, um, senior care facility, the one going east Anchorage, they wanted to build a greenhouse on top, and they couldn't under our old zoning code because of height restrictions. And so, we passed an exception where a, a certain kind of greenhouse doesn't count towards your height restriction. So, that was something that we did to, to promote, greenhouses at least, not like a traditional green roof.
So, maybe it could be site-specific.
Well, I think, I mean, that's just one of those policies where maybe, maybe we don't incentivize them, but we can at least, like, try to get out of their way. You know, because right now, we have these Title 21 requirements that sometimes actively prevent people from building green roofs.
Thank you. President Bresset?
So, um, I will apologize. I have to leave in about 15 minutes. I'm doing a strategic planning, uh, for a, a small group. But, um, you know, first of all, I wanna say, um, we, we are trying to do a lot in our schools. I mean, we are teaching climate change, um, we are, we have gardens at most of our schools. We're looking at every energy efficiency we can. But understand that, um, we have had flat funding since 2011, and we don't know what the budget's gonna be this year. And, uh, you know, this is an example, usually we have 10 holdback teachers that we can put in districts that, um, we have, uh, larger populations that we have to, uh, put into that school immediately, like, the first day. This year, we didn't have the funds for that, so we had to displace teachers the first day of school, uh, before school to move their classrooms to another school. So, I just want, you know, it's, and, and I'm gonna kind of respond, it's not an excuse, it's reality. Um, it's not an excuse that we're not looking at solar power energy quickly enough. It's, it's a reality that it will take time to study this, and we have a focus on reading and math and educating our children. And it's not that this is not important, I will tell you that right now, climate change is very important. And I think as a school district, we're very responsible. We will, um, look at other ways. We always do look at other ways that we can do this. Um, as a school board, I will make sure that, um, I talk to, uh, Dr. Bishop, and we will set up that invitation to view Egan Center. Um, it's not that we don't wanna do this, but please realize that we have constraints in this day and time with our budget and resources because we don't have the resources we had before. Um, so, again, it's not an excuse, it's reality, and we are doing what we can.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dyson?
Yeah, that thing, you know, I wanna identify with both of the last two comments. Mr. Dunbar's right. One of the things we gotta do is get out of the way of good things, you know, and, and all the incentives. Mr. Schuetti, I talked with after we passed our climate change thing, and I said, can we do more to, uh, encourage, yeah, better land use, reforestation, and all those kind of things? And he said, absolutely. So, if any of you have contact with the group that was cited in the, in the bibliography and on that thing, you know, on, on that whole thing of replanting and stuff, I'd like to get them flanged up with Mr. Schuetti and, and, um, maybe myself, uh, to, to really identify what we could do on both sides. Get out of the way and reduce incentives. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so, I have, uh, Mr. Holloman and then Ms. Salatell, and then I wanted to see, Shane, if you had anything else. Um, so, Mr. Holloman?
Um, something occurred to me while we were talking about all this. We actually have a lot more parking lots than roof, and in other places with more gentle clients, um, there are a lot of places that have solar panels like that. It occurred to me that if we could create a, a blueprint for an efficient way of putting solar in our parking lots, it'd be much more modular. It, it wouldn't be something where you had to look at engineering and a load bearing, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously, clearing in snow is a big deal. Um, there are complications to it, but it's a lot more standardized. Um, and it's something that possibly UAA Engineering could participate with the city and the school district on looking at what, what's the best way to do this? And if the number comes out reasonably well, um, if there was some way to, to create an entity that would basically front the installation and construction to where we pay back at a, at a fraction of the, say, 75% of what we normally spend on electricity would, would go to the electricity derived until it was paid for, that, that might be a way to avoid bonding because unfortunately, we, we have a bond shortage as well. Um, bonding for solar panels, I think, can make a lot of sense, but it does mean that we're not bonding for things that we need to do because we're not bonding for everything we need to do. So, if, if, if there's a non-bond way to look at getting these built and in place that doesn't completely complicate the lives of the people who have to clear snow out of the parking lot, we've got a lot of acreage. I mean, we have a lot of acreage of parking lot that can be dedicated to that. I mean, we have a lot of acreage of parking lot that can be dedicated to that, again, saving money and possibly in a way that doesn't directly impact taxpayers, doesn't directly impact any of our budgets. But a sort of a side channel to getting them constructed and in place, and we pay back the money out of reduced cost for electricity. And I know this isn't a simple project, but you're not doing anything else right here. So if you can take that up, that would be, that's really a brilliant suggestion.
Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Chair, I don't usually say anything, but I have to comment, when she was speaking, she said, what is a box? He just answered, do. Right? Think outside the box, it's not even a box.
Yeah, get out of the parking lot.
I agree with Fred.
Out of the box is under the parking lot.
Thank you. Ms. Bellamy.
Oh, yes, thank you. And thank you for the information. We, last week, we were at the School Board Conference, and Mr. Hallivan and I took four students out for lunch. And one of the questions we asked them was, you know, we just asked them in general, what, you know, what kinds of things concern you? Climate change came up, and I think it was probably about a ten, fifteen-minute discussion in an hour's lunch. So it's an important subject, not just for us adults, it's also for kids. So it seems to me that one of the things that we can do that won't cost us a lot of money right now is to engage kids, get this action group going, give them voice around this subject. And I think the last thing on your list, where, on the main subjects that had to do with outreach and education, we can all do that right now. You've got the literature or can adapt it to what we need. It seems to me, and we got the kids, it seems to me that those two things, we should be able to at least start conversations around and move forward on. I mean, I have been enlightened today, and I'm really into parts of this, but I had not even wrapped my mind around other parts of it, the parts that you've shared with me today and how they hook into the overall subject of climate change. So education is a huge factor. And I think if we can get kids active, a lot of kids are, but let's get them, let's get this group going, we know that we can do that, we can help create a youth voice around this subject, and we know that we can help get education about this out. So, and I agree with President Marset that we could, we need to go visit, because when we were having lunch and talking about it, we looked at the, what was that, the Egan Center? And it said, this building powered by solar, whatever it said. And it was just like a profound moment for me and for the kids. Oh, yeah, that's the reality of, you know, that's the results of what can be. And so I do thank you guys for today, and I just want us to leave here with one of two things that we can pursue and do right now, that, don't wait for the bond, don't wait for all this other stuff. I know it's important, I do, but there are some things here that we can do right now, starting today.
Thank you. And I have one of those ideas to bring up in a minute. Mr. Dunbar.
I knew you did. No, I'm joking. I don't know what to know.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the city of Oakland has had a program where they would finance solar panels to have installed on residents' rooms, and they would add a little bit to their mortgage payment each month to allow these residents to pay it off over a twenty or thirty-year time period. And that's been very successful, and they're reducing their overall traffic burden and increasing renewable energy use in the city of Oakland. And since it's in a warmer climate, they, you know, can, the panels are useful three sixty-five, you know, every day. Where here in the wintertime, it's not quite as efficient, physically, but that's, you know, that's something that's been going for, I probably ten, fifteen years.
Thank you. Ms. Coquelin, did you have anything else? Okay, so, oh, yes.
I'm Mark Stock, I'm Deputy Superintendent. Just a quick comment on behalf of Dr. Bishop, I wish the mayor were here. I don't want anyone in the room to think that as a School Board, our administration is reluctant to discuss or to engage in any of these discussions. But if you sense a kind of heaviness in the room sometimes from us, part of it is because when you think about our mission, in almost every city in America, in most of them, schools are the largest employer, they touch the most lives, they have the students, the parents, our clients, the grandparents, everyone's been to school, the taxpayers. And so almost no social or economic issue in our country we face is really addressed without somehow touching the schools. So we are the go-to place for everything, whether it's dating violence, whether it's our latest one on obesity and wellness and recess and nutrition and mental health, suicide prevention, these are all things that burden us. And I think if you sense the heaviness in the room, it's not because we're against solar energy. We know these are things we have to address in terms of energy efficiency. But when you squeeze an hour in to discuss climate change, we're a closed system, you squeeze another hour out. If you go back and look at the history over the last seventy-five years of what public schools have been asked to do, the original issue, reading, writing, math, civics. At UAA last year, I read the list from two thousand and ten. It took me four and a half minutes reading as fast as I could. The same school year, the same school agrarian schedule, as Forrest mentioned, it's all there, and it's a closed system. And so the heaviness you feel is just, we push it in, and then we push something else out, which is fine, but it's a social discussion for the group, and that's kind of what you're feeling from us, not reluctance, we'll do what we got to do, and we'll be more efficient, and we believe that efficiency is important. But that's, I think, what we're trying to say, that's kind of what, at least that's what I'm feeling, I can't speak.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for sharing that. Okay, so I guess I have one question that might lead to the idea I want to bring up. So the Assembly, when deliberating the Climate Action Plan, we passed a resolution in support of the text of the plan and in support of finding ways for us to move forward with the plan. And so I just wanted to ask the School Board to see if any such resolution has come before the body.
No.
So I guess I'll just put this out there, since no resolution has come before the body, would the School Board be interested in doing that? And I think it was important for us, and we are, for the Assembly, we really did get a lot of positive feedback, because it's a statement and it's a commitment. And so if the School Board is interested in that, I just want to put that on the table, I think that would be a great idea.
So I think, sorry.
Go ahead.
Certainly you can send that to us, and I can, we can put it on our agenda to discuss and then vote on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts, concluding ideas before we wrap up?
If I may, well, again, thank you for your time. I want to acknowledge that I learned a ton about what the School District is doing, and it does a lot. So thank you for that final comment. In regards to adopting this plan, this is really focused at the municipality, local government, and it, like I said, it does include the School District, so it could be that the School District adopts it or maybe even adapts it. So I'd be willing to work with you on either.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, you're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.